Seeing that the time is upon us and we do have a quorum, I would like to start the meeting and have called the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hanos.
Here.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Carlin.
Here.
Dr. Flowers.
Present.
Mrs. Gaines.
Here.
And Sylvia.
Here.
All present. Can we please stand for the pledge to allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this point in time, we'd like to have a moment of silence for the following people. We would like to please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Herb Regal, the uncle of Elizabeth Brett, IT secretary; Catherine Mallett, mother of Mary Cousins, RHS math teacher; Robert Potter, Sr., father of Tracy Hackley, RHS special education teacher; Anthony Taverra, uncle of John Horseman, RHS PE teacher; Charlene McManus, mother-in-law of Jenny McManus, TMS grade eight teacher; Peter Trago, father of Susan Potter, Pell Annex paraeducator; and Noni Nazario Santiago, pre-K student at the Pell Annex. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The next order of business would be public comment. Ms. Nash, has anybody signed up for a public comment?
Still not seen.
Thank you. If there is an item on the agenda and someone would like to speak on that, we will certainly entertain that. Next order of business this evening is, I always skipped here, all the subcommittee appointments. I'm sorry. I need to bring out my agenda. Yes, prior to that, we had some subcommittee appointments, which is basically some housekeeping. We had some individuals that were left off of the original list for being put on to the school committee building committee, and this was Mr. Thomas Harrop, Lynn Segley, and Gary Michael.
Ms. Gaines.
No.
I'll show up anyway.
Okay. So is there any discussion on that? Make motion to approve the subcommittee appointment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Ajahnay with our student council update. It's all yours.
Hello. So for activities, the best buddies having a raffle, May 18th to the 14th, and there's a play, The Little Mermaid Play, from 11:00 to 10:00, I meant from 7:00 to 9:00 on May 11th, and also on Saturday, there's a 12 o'clock in the afternoon one and a 7:00 at night one. For sports, the girls' track team placed sixth in the Eastern Division State Meet. The boys' lax team is, they won seven games and didn't lose any. The baseball team won 11 and lost two. The boys' track team placed second in their meet overall, and softball's eight and four. And for seniors, a senior project, Matilda Tash is trying to raise $30,000 for cancer, and so help her out if you can. And for activities, the junior prom will be May 25th, and the senior prom will be June 13th.
Awesome. Sounds like good stuff. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. The next, the next we have resolutions and certificates of achievement, and from the superintendent, we have Mr. Gomes going to hand out a couple certificates. We have certificates for the all-state orchestra and chorus. Superintendent Jermaine, this is from you. I can read it out or you can report out.
Thank you, Mr. Hanos. This evening, we have some certificates of achievement. I do not have the list, but I'd like to recognize Ms. Diane Sheehan, the supervisor of arts, and I also see her department up there, and I'd like her to join the podium. And please introduce your staff. I see them out there.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Ms. Brianna Borin to come up, our TMS of music strings, music teacher, and also strings at Pell, and Mr. Dominic Pitsi, who's at the high school for music band, orchestra, music, he'll do a whole bunch of things. So, having I'm going to have Mrs. Borin do her honors to her students, as they rightfully belong to her.
All right. So these are for participation in the elementary all-state chorus. If you don't know, this chorus is a statewide chorus. There's 150 participants in it, from all different elementary and middle school in our case, because it does go through sixth grade. So for those students who participated, Elio Lardito, and his brother, Elean Lardito, and I have Rowan Green.
Please pause for a picture. And Mr. Gomes and Brianna, can you stand with the group? Thank you.
And up at the high school, I have one student that participated in all-state, our first violinist for our orchestra, Owen Martin. He's been a great help for us this past year in getting a lot of music done, so Owen Martin.
I believe he's also a semi-finalist for Presidential Scholar as well, Owen Martin. His grandfather used to be the head of the guidance department at Rogers High School, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Smith.
Great job. Thanks, guys. And thanks to the staff as well, for the support you give to kids. The next we have is certificates of achievement. It's RHS robotics, and I believe Ms. Sylvia would like to, yeah, hand them out. I'll read them. She's a little short on voice tonight, so we won't make her do that.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Dixon is also here this evening, the teacher. Mr. Dickinson, the teacher, is here.
Excellent. Mr. Davidson. Dickinson, I'm sorry. You want to give us a little bit of a, just a overview of what's going on with this awesome robotics team, Mr. Dickinson?
We do have an awesome robotics team. We have recently completed two regional competitions where each team managed to win first place in two different divisions, in two different meets. That puts us in contention to go to the national event, which is June 3rd for us. That will be at UMass Dartmouth. This is the fourth year running that both teams have won and managed to get a place in going to the national event.
That's great. Four years in a row. Congratulations.
Four years in a row. We're Vikings.
Catching up to the Patriots here with these championships, you know.
I think we need six.
Yes.
Do I get it right?
We'll get you it right. So the robotics team members are as follows, and if you would come on up, and Ms. Sylvia would be glad to give you your certificate, and then we'd like to get a picture with your teacher and Ms. Sylvia. So Brooklyn Wakefield, Cynthia Rodriguez, Brandon Poling, Rose Kutsavtis, Carolyn Florence, Pearson Garcia, Ezra Montero, and Jack Garforth. So we got to get a picture with you, Kath. Go over and... Great. Thanks, guys. Nice job.
Thank you.
We will represent the United States.
Next on the agenda is Agenda Item 4.3. I believe Ms. Gaines is going to read this resolution. This was brought forward by Ms. Sylvia. Ms. Gaines?
This is Newport School Committee Resolution on Gun-Free Schools. Whereas forty states do not permit firearms on school grounds, including persons with permits to carry and conceal a weapon. And whereas the Executive Board of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees believes that students must have a safe and supportive climate and learning environment that supports their opportunities to learn, and that is free from abuse, violence, bullying, weapons, and harmful substances, including alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And whereas the Rhode Island Association of School Committees Executive Board has voted to support banning concealed weapons on school grounds, except by peace officers, as defined in Article 12722. And whereas the Rhode Island Superintendent's Association has adopted the School Superintendent's Association, AASA, Position Paper on School Safety, a response to the tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary. And whereas the Rhode Island Association of School Principals Executive Board has voted to endorse and support the ban on weapons on school grounds, except for authorized members of law enforcement, holding to its core belief that school environments should be devoid of all conditions that may compromise the safety of students and staff. And whereas the Rhode Island Education Leadership has carefully considered and implemented regularly audited school and district-wide building safety plans and emergency protocols, inclusive of first responders, law enforcement, and school community. And whereas the Rhode Island General Laws, Article 16217A, guarantees each student, staff member, teacher, and administrator has a right to attend and or work at a school which is safe and secure, and which is free from the threat, actual or implied. And whereas Rhode Island General Law 16219.111, entitled Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards, states that the school committees must recognize that the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. And whereas Rhode Island General Law 1629A provides that the entire care, control, and management of all public school interests of several citizen towns shall be vested in the school committees of the several cities and towns, including the right to ban any and all weapons in public schools and on public school grounds, except by peace officers, as defined in Article 12721. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newport School Committee respectfully request that the Rhode Island General Assembly support any and all legislative proposals that would ban bringing firearms onto school grounds, except by peace officers, as defined in Article 12721. Resolve that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to every Rhode Island municipality, school committee, state senator, state representative, and the governor. Whereas to bear witness, this has been signed by David Sehanos, Chair, Newport School Committee.
Thank you.
Remove passage of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item up for this resolution, this certificate this evening, is Ms. Sylvia as, I'm sorry, I think I have the wrong...
It's really the entire...
Yes. Mr. Carlin and Ms. Sylvia present an attached resolution in honor of none other than Mr. Sidney Williams, retired Assistant Superintendent and school historian, in honor of his 90th birthday. Mr. Carlin, would you please stand up to the rostrum and honor
Sid, do you want to come up now, or do you want to wait until it's red?
[laughing]
As you can...
[laughing]
These tend to get a little long, but the Newport Public Schools historian, whereas Sidney O. Williams, a highly respected citizen of the city of Newport and champion of the Newport Public Schools, served as a teacher and administrator in the Newport school system for 33 years. And whereas Sidney O. Williams began his teaching career at Cranston Calvert School in 1953. In 1959, he transferred to the Science Department at Thompson Junior High School, when it was Thompson Junior High School. And in 1966, Sidney O. Williams was appointed the Federal Projects Coordinator and was responsible for the Newport School Department being awarded the prestigious designation, prestigious designation of Washington, DC, as one of the best Title I corrective reading programs in our nation. And whereas in 1972, Sidney O. Williams was appointed Assistant Superintendent of Schools, a position in which he served with distinction until his retirement in 1986. And whereas Sidney O. Williams currently serves as President of the Lower Wharf Association, which built the Calendar School on Third Street and Potter School on Elm Street, and that annually awards scholarships to graduating Rogers High School seniors, to date totaling over $1 million. And whereas, not one to remain idle, upon his retirement, Sidney O. Williams undertook the gargantuan project of recording the history of the Newport Public Schools. He spent many hours researching records dating back to the 1600s. And whereas Sidney O. Williams has recorded the history of each public school in the city of Newport, beginning with the donation of a building at the corner of Marsh and Washington Streets, it's still standing, by a privateer named Potter, for use as the first public school to serve the city's poor children, through to the dedication of the city's newest state-of-the-art Claiborne-Pell Elementary School where we are this evening in 2013. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newport School Committee expresses its gratitude to Sidney O. Williams for his many years of dedicated service to the Newport Public Schools and the children and families of Newport, and in recognition of his diligent research, does hereby confer upon him the title of Newport Public Schools Historian. And be it further resolved that the Newport School Committee congratulates Sid Williams on the celebration of his 90th birthday, celebrated just recently on April 20th, and extends to him very best wishes for continued good health and happiness in the years ahead. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, signed by the Chair and by the Superintendent of Schools, shall be presented this evening to Sidney O. Williams and spread upon the records of the Newport School Committee. Sid, congratulate me.
You know, one of the worst things that you can do is put a teacher in front of a microphone. Because they either are too short in their speech or too long. My speech tonight will be a demonstration of my height. So you know we won't be here too long. But I would like to tell you and the committee that I'm honored and very appreciative of the fact that you have seemed fit to confer this honor on me tonight. I'm thankful for the support that I've received from former school committees, superintendents, who gave me the opportunity to do something that I loved doing, which is working with the children. And the 32 years that I have been retired, that's a long time. I had the opportunity to work in the archives, and in those archives are to be found documents that go back to the middle 1800s, some of them handwritten with no ink blots, no erasures. And sad to say, they're deteriorating. And I hope somewhere along the route that the school committee can find time or a room somewhere where these valuable parts of Newport's district can be placed and taken care of, and maybe allow people to eventually come in and see what kind of a history they have had. I have been blessed to teach in Newport. I've been blessed for school committees, principals, teachers that I've worked with. And a lot of credit goes, not only to the teachers, but to the parents who allowed me to have a small part in the life of their children. I thank you all. I thank them. See you shortly. It's one of my former students. And there's another one right there, Jared.
I just want to say a quick word that not only did he do everything for the schools and the children, he helped people out. And in 1977, '78, when my circumstances changed and I knew I was going back to work, and we were talking, and the position opened up at City Hall, and I said, "Oh, I haven't worked in eight years. I would never be able to do the shorthand speed." He rides at my house with, yes, records, 33 and a half RPM long-playing records, so I could sit and practice my speed in shorthand. Oh, my goodness. The other little thing is, I tried to reach him last week. I called him dinnertime, shortly after. No call back. Called him the next morning, no call back. Later in the afternoon, he said, "Oh, I was out last, I didn't get home till late." And then I had a meeting at 7:30 in the morning. And he said, "That's what keeps them going." So it's been another 90 years. [laughing]
And on behalf of the Newport Public Schools, Mr. Williams, I think we were blessed by you with all your dedication. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick acknowledgement, if I could as well. Kathy put this item on the agenda, but the original idea, and he's here somewhere, the former state senator for the city of Newport, and the former chair of this very committee, Bud Sicilini, is here this evening. Thank you, Bud.
Thanks.
I just want to, Sid, all the work, all the research you did in giving me the names of every elementary school that was ever opened in Newport, the school committee has appropriated money for those plaques to be made, and they will be along that wall shortly. Thank you very much.
The next items on the agenda are action items. We have Action Item 5.1. This is Mr. Jared Vance, principal of Rogers High School. Is, we're looking for a request for approval to change school start and end times for Rogers, Thompson, Middle School, and Pell Elementary School. Mr. Jared Vance has some information about the start times in the school year for Rogers High School. The change is supported by the superintendent and due to a tiered transportation system, the starts for all school times will need to change. The new school times are recommended as follows. Rogers High School to start at 7:30 and end at 2:00. Thompson Middle School to start at 8:00 and end at 2:30. Pell Elementary School to start at 8:30 and end at 3:00. And Pell Annex or JFK to start at 8:45 and 3:15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We put this item off last, at the last meeting, because we hadn't advertised it properly. We had only the start and end times, or the proposed start and end times for Rogers High School. How were parents notified of, we were, it was important to many members of this school committee last month that we notify parents and families that we have a proposed change in times for the, all three schools. How, well, let me just ask, were any notices sent home to parents? Superintendent Jermaine?
The, at all buildings since the middle of April, there were postings, there were emails, there was, on the app was taken. As a matter of fact, this afternoon, I sent you probably a list of at least a dozen different venues and what was posted on emails. As far as flyers, I am not aware.
Did Pell?
Pell is not here, but I'm not aware of any flyers that actually went. Not only along with that, it was also printed in the Newport Daily News after your last meeting. It was also presented at the Parent Advisory Council, and it was also presented at the Pell PTO meeting just recently this past month. So there's been discussion all throughout the district about this. Not only that, I know Mr. Vance has actually had meetings with his staff, teachers, and students. He also presented surveys, not only for his own school, for the parents and teachers, but I believe it was for Thompson and Pell as well? And that is, yes, Thompson and Pell as well.
So there were, there were surveys sent home to parents? I'm not aware of any surveys that parents were given.
Yes, there were.
When were the, when were the surveys from Rogers High School sent home to parents or given to parents?
So they were emailed out through the schools. It was a, it was a Google form, and the link was on the website. On each, each school's website had their individual survey. I believe it was the beginning of April that those surveys were posted, and that was like a week before we met, and I came in with the results at that school committee meeting around the results from those three surveys, and it was overwhelmingly positive from all three schools.
Right. I saw your research here tonight, repeated from April. It appeared, it said teachers and students. I didn't see parents and families. So can you tell me what the results are? Refresh me on the parents and families, obviously a very important component of this situation. They're the ones that bring the kids to school. What was the response from parents and families?
While Mr. Vance is looking that up, I'll just, for the public, there were 174 responses from Rogers High School. We had, Thompson Middle School had 150, I'm sorry, 174 from Rogers High School, 86 responses from Thompson Middle School, 155 responses from Pell, for a total response of 415.
Are those broken down by students, staff, and non-students and staff, for example, parents, as I just asked Principal Vance? Is there any way we can tell what the parents think of this, these time changes?
Those responses are all from families. That's not students and staff.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion or questions from Mr. Vance? Dr. Flowers?
No, just want to mention that I've seen it on the social media, announcing and of course encouraging for tonight's meeting. Also, robo calls went out, and I, I'm on the list for all the schools. And we had gotten the poll, and of course, you had to indicate what school your child was in. I couldn't, so I couldn't continue it. But it went out... But it went out really into vast numbers, so all the media were used in this. And that was my concern, that people be given the opportunity. And looking at, just hearing the numbers, it's always should be understood, with polls you rarely, if ever, get, you know, 100%. However, sometimes those numbers reflect more students.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion?
Just another quick question, please, Mr. Chairman. The second concern I had was regarding busing. Around August of last year, you told us, Superintendent Jermaine, that we needed to change the time for start and finish at Pell School because the bus company could not appropriately handle their job based on the schedule that we had at Pell. So we took a tough vote. The vote was five to two in order to change the time at Pell, starting in the end time at Pell. Now, this suggested schedule goes back to the very timeframe that we were at at the end of August, when we suggested a new, or when the bus company suggested they could not handle the time, the half-hour differentiation between schools. Has anything changed since then?
Yes, actually, this is different from when, last year. Last year, if you remember correctly, we started Thompson first, then we went to Rogers, then we went to the Pell. We have had the bus company look into this and investigate, and they do have in writing from them that they will be able to deliver and pick up our students on time. So now with the 7:30 start with Rogers, Thompson next, and then Pell, and then eventually, as always, JFK at the end. The bus company did send me an email and said they can do this and follow through.
Excellent. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you. Thank you for working that out, Mr. Vance. The next item up for action would be 5.2, request for approval to award RFP 18050, Professional Educational Facilities Planning Firm, to provide comprehensive, long-term master educational facilities plan for the Newport School Department.
Is that a request or motion?
Yeah, I'll read it, but yeah. The recommendation to allow Newport Public School Administration to enter into negotiations with Studio J A E D, Tendorn Street, Suite 700, Providence, Rhode Island, for creation of a comprehensive, long-term, master educational facilities plan for Newport School Department, submission of school building requests for consideration to receive any available reimbursements for future building projects needed to support Newport Public Schools' education goals to ride stages one and two. This contract does not exceed $26,060. The district received six bids in response to this RFP. After evaluating the firms in relation to expected qualifications, four of the firms were invited to an interview with a subset of Newport Public Schools Building Subcommittee. The interview team selected two of the firms interviewed to move on the process. After further evaluation of cost of proposals, the interview team rated the two firms. The rating revealed that one of the proposals was more advantageous to the public schools, and therefore, the recommendation to the school committee was Studio J A E D. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two years ago, in 2016, March, we voted as a school committee to award a strategic, to award an architectural firm, Rouse Architecture, at the cost of $169,000, a contract to create a five-year strategic plan, facilities plan for the public schools. What's wrong with that plan that we had paid $169,000 for? Why do we need another one?
It is radically and drastically different. That basically looked at the schools and the condition of the bricks and mortar. This educational planning group is actually going to go into the community and find out what educational scheduling would best suit the students and the diverse community. They will then come back and discuss the architectural design of the building. So this is apples and oranges. That particular bid had to go out and was awarded, and in fact, we ended up getting reimbursed a tremendous amount of money. So we spent some money, but the reimbursement on the other end for putting the roofs on the Rogers High School was great. These are not similar bids, Mr. Carlin. These are completely different styled bids. That was just straight up what's the schools and the bricks and mortar. This is more into education and scheduling and what the needs are for the children in the district.
Why the facilities plan component to it, then?
It is part of the RIDE process, RIDE being the Rhode Island Department of Education. We came down, we've had multiple meetings, which was attended by a number of people, and this was explained to us, that we needed to do this first, that the most important and most integral person within this group, well, group of people, would be the educational planner. You don't want to just throw up a school and then figure out how you're going to fill it. You want to design it so that the flows are good, you find out what your educational needs are and things of that nature. This group is a very philosophical educational group that thinks about and plans out the appropriate school or design that you would need for your particular area. And with that, they would then turn it over to a team of architects who would then, which everybody states to us of all the six things was, that's the easy part, once we figure out what you need. But what we need to find out is what do you need within your community with such a diverse community that we have? So this, I believe, and it also is the first and foremost group that RIDE specifically stated, we need to get them on board first and foremost in order to proceed with stages one and two.
So the, when you proceed with stages one and two, the assumption by granting this contract, the assumption is that, and you had mentioned, you don't just put up a school. So the assumption is that we are going to be building a school, building a new school?
Those assumptions are not made yet. They're going to look at what we have, and they're going to look at what the needs for the district are, and these are the experts. I'm certainly not an expert in this field. This is what these people do. They have very long resumes, and they've been doing this for a long, long time, and that's the reason why we hire a professional group to do such a...
Why didn't we have, why didn't we hire this group two years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago?
Because it actually has nothing to do with what you're, it's a completely different animal. Has nothing to do with it. That was, are your windows falling out? Are your doors falling out? How many doors you need to replace? This is completely different animal.
No, I guess what I'm asking is, we have three schools in the system. Thirty-six districts have schools, whether they're combined districts or individual districts, they have schools within their districts. A plan like this, an educational plan with a facilities component, has got to be based on a need for something. So if you're not assuming that there's going to be a new school built, then why not, I mean, why would we need an educational planning contract if it has nothing to do with facilities? In other words, either we're going to build a new school, and we're just trying to pretend that we're not preparing for that, or we're spending money on something that we don't need. We didn't, if this is necessary, why didn't we have this plan if it has nothing to do with facilities? If it has to do with judging the community's need for a proper education, for lack of a better phrase, then why didn't we have it last year, three years ago? Why don't 36 other districts, why doesn't Middletown have it? Portsmouth, Little Compton, Tiverton, Jamestown? Why are we doing this now, having an educational, an educational, for lack of a better phrase, again, needs synopsis?
Okay, I already explained that, and I want to thank you for your input and questions, but I'm going to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Thank you. All right, the next action item is 5.3, request for approval for K curriculum. Dr. Bean?
At the last meeting, when Dr. Bean spoke to this new curriculum, it was requested and by policy, you wanted to vote on the curriculum. So tonight, she's requesting a vote to approve the Boston curriculum.
Do we have a motion first?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Bean, if you want to just give us an overview?
Sure. We were invited with several other districts to apply for the best practices in curriculum implementation with the Boston curriculum. It's a center-play-based curriculum. So we have two of our K teachers who are going to be piloting this curriculum next year, and, you know, we've received the grant from the state, so we're really excited. And they'll be going to four days of PD in the, in May, along with Tracy Westman and I will be attending a facilitator's PD in addition to that.
And the grant will cover the anticipated costs of this?
Materials, a part-time coach who will be working with those two kindergarten teachers as well.
Excellent. Is there any further questions? Ms. Boland?
Yeah, so the coach, is that going to become like a teacher from Pell? Or is that, you're going to...
No, because we have two kindergarten teachers, it's less.
Because it was going to be full-time?
It was a full, it was going to be a full-time position.
Right, now it's just going to be a part-time. You feel it'll be just as, you know, as successful, hopefully?
Right, well, now that we're not hiring our own coach, then there's a recommended facilitation company that they've been using for other districts that have small teachers.
Small numbers.
Yep, yep, so I've been in contact with them.
So does that change the amount of money we get, or is it just saved?
Yes. No, it changes the amount of money. Yeah.
Do we have to reapply for the next year if we want to go school-wide?
If they're offering it, so we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Got it.
Ms. Gains?
Dr. Bean, if you would, would you speak to the curriculum? You just passed over the term "play," but I think for a lot of parents, it's very scary that their pre-kindergartner is in school. And I think it's important for them to know that there is a lot of play in this curriculum, and that kids learn through play.
Right, we, when we were deciding about applying for the grant, we sent Mrs. Westman and two of the kindergarten teachers over to another district that is in their second year. One of the things that they came back with was an excitement for the amount of play that they saw happening in the classrooms, but the amount of language that was going on, the vocabulary development has been extraordinary. The research that we've done from the Boston implementation has been very, very positive with Boston having similar demographics as Newport. They've been very, very successful with the play-based, center-based, but that doesn't mean it's not rigorous. So what the students are putting together at the end of each unit, they have projects, they work as teams, they do presentations, they bring in their families to share their project, their thoughts, they're really powerful, but the language has been extraordinary, the language development.
Ms. Boland?
I just want to say, like, it's in education that pendulum swings, because we went all the way over to the other side where, oh, we can't play in school, you know, we're, this is all business. And now, you know, it's swinging back, but it's swinging with the language part of it, which is going to be very powerful for these kids, I think. And it's exciting to hear because the research says that the most important things are to learn how to get along with your peers, follow directions, organize yourself, and so I'm very excited to see this be implemented.
Great.
Any other further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
The next item up for action would be request for approval of the Career Tech internship program. Mr. Young would request approval of the NAC-TAC internship program as presented, and this program has been vetted through the Newport Public School Curriculum Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr., excuse me, Mr. Young, would you just give us a quick overview of what we're doing? I think it's great stuff, but just let the public know what this is all about.
Sure, so as, you know, we have more students in the Career and Tech program, and as we start to get more students, give them the opportunities to do internships, I felt like we needed some type of feedback. You know, how do I know that this student is actually doing what we think he's doing? And what kind of feedback, you know, can the employer give to us for, you know, just for a learning experience? Was he doing well? He needs to work on this, he needs to work on that. So just to give us kind of an update on, you know, how well the student is doing. And it's also an opportunity for the student to take the positive feedback and, you know, put that in that student's resume, or, you know, here's some positive stuff when he goes out looking for a job. So one, to, you know, get feedback from this, from how well the student's doing. Also, I want to know how the employers are doing. Is this a good place to send students? You know, are they actually doing what they say they're going to do, or is he just, you know, sweeping floors and picking up trash? I mean, so I want a feedback from both sides, and I, you know, I saw a need as we start, you know, as our numbers increase, and Carrie and I are starting to place more, or Carrie's placing more students, you know, out in the workplace, you know, let's just get some feedback in a way to track some of these things. So I just, you know, I saw a need, I put this together, vetted it through some folks, and, you know, I think it's a, it fills a kind of a void that we have at the tech center.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Young? All in favor of this proposal?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you very much, and thank you both, Carrie, Mr. Young, for the hard work, and all the other staff in the Career Tech. It's thriving over there, nice job. And I think we did a real good job on our, the other meeting.
So, yeah, so the visiting team recommended that we maintain our accreditation, so their findings go to the board in October. They only meet twice a year, and I'm very confident that we will maintain our independent accreditation. So we're only two Career and Tech centers in Rhode Island that have their own accreditation, we're one of them, so does say a lot. The team really, really, really came together, the teachers, everybody involved in NAC-TAC really came together. They were overwhelmed by the amount of people that showed up on the event on Monday night that really set the tone, kind of, you know, it's kind of like scoring a touchdown on the kickoff, you know. We're ahead in the game before the game really starts, and that really did set a good tone. And I'll publicly recognize Bobby Coyne for the performance he did in the Career and Tech Center. I mean, it was, it was the first thing that the team stopped and said, they stopped in the middle of their tour and said, "I can't believe how great this place looks." And, you know, Bobby went above and beyond. He's going to yell at me for doing this, but I do want to recognize his performance. It was, it's, it really did set the tone for the visit.
Thank you.
Is this a 10-year?
This is the 10-year, yes, yes.
Yeah, fantastic. Once every 10 years, we have a group come in and give us an outside observation, and like Mr. Young said, with the staff and everybody, I believe, we knocked it out of the park. Excellent job organizing it. I was thinking we were just coming in to have a discussion. The superintendent said, "Can you make the meeting?" And I thought I was just going to sit there at a table full of people and talk, but the Career Tech culinary group put on, you know, this outstanding meal and just did a fantastic job. All the kids stepped up, everybody was pitching in, and just a real wonderful job all the way around. My thanks and gratitude to all of the staff that worked so hard, and nice job getting that, we just need that piece of paper, but awesome job. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
We're at 6.6?
The next, the next item up would be a request for permission to change collection process for school lunch. Ms. Boland just wanted to speak on this briefly.
Well, I'm going to let Mr. Colley speak too. So, but basically, we adopted last year a policy here in Newport that we wouldn't do lunch shaming, which is when, and it was happening all over the country, where basically the kids would get, you know, a sandwich or something completely different than the other students when their bills weren't paid in the lunchroom. So we decided we wanted to totally stay away from that, that we wanted to make sure kids were fed and fed adequately. But in doing so, we also realized that there's an issue with collecting outstanding debts. Now, what we did for that is we hired a, we call it a meals advocate, and this meals advocate has helped tremendously to get everything rolling. She and Mr. Colley have been working together to make sure that we get all the kids identified who need to be identified. So in the meantime, though, we realized that we're running, we're still running up a debt with students who do not qualify for free and reduced lunch and whose parents don't step up to the plate to pay for their lunches, all right? So they kind of fall through the cracks and realize, you know, our goodness in making sure that all the kids get fed, they're getting fed every day, but we are now trying to lessen the debt that we are building here in Newport. And I'll let Mr. Colley talk. So he came to an idea to our health and wellness group about how we might collect some of this money, and he's going to speak to that.
At this point, whenever we have a parent that doesn't qualify for either the free or the reduced lunch program, we do notify them... or the reduced lunch program, we do notify them, and as they begin to accrue some debt because they don't send money with the children, or they don't send them with a lunch, and we feel obligated to feed them as we should, we eventually begin sending home notices through the school. Apparently, that has not been very successful. We do collect some of the debt back based on those notices going to the parents as a reminder. It's very simple, you can go online and put in money into your child's account, or you can send money in. But what I, we found is, in, in other districts, you may have to engage a collection agency so that it puts a little distance between the school administrators and the people working in the school that try to build a relationship with the parents, but you still need to make those phone calls and have follow-up letters. And eventually, if the student accrues a large enough debt, we may be able to put them into a collection system, just like you would any other debt that you accumulate through your personal life. So it would be an idea of looking for a company who would be able to do this for us, both the phone calls, the letters, and then eventually, if nothing works, then do a collection process that would give us a partial return, and the other part would probably go back to the collection agency.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I move a question.
Before discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to assure, and Becky, you might want to address this, but we did discuss that parents who legitimately are not able to pay would not be involved in this process.
Absolutely not.
So these are people who can, but don't.
Yes.
Exactly.
Only they.
So officially, do we just need to make a motion, and then we can have the open other? So Mrs. Gaines, you made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
What's the motion? I don't see anything on here, on the, the board docs. It says request for permission to change collection. Everything else had, you know, an accompanying, accompanying resolution. What are we voting on?
I move that we grant the permission to change the collection process for school lunch debt. That was my motion.
Where is it?
I just read it.
So you're making an oral motion as opposed to?
It's written on the agenda.
Right here.
Request for permission to change collection process for school lunch debt.
Yes.
Correct.
That's it.
That's the nation, that's the, the nature of your motion?
That's my motion.
I mean, that's, that's rather expansive, that covers a lot of territory.
Well, I do believe we just had an explanation from Dr. Colley of what the, what it was going to be. I just listened to him, and I heard exactly the parameters.
I, I heard him, I heard him say the potential to bring in a firm as a collection agency. I don't see anything about that. Maybe people spend money like it's going out of style. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll second the motion, but I have a question.
Sure.
Does this have to go out to bid, or?
It probably will go out as an RFP, which will come back to you for approval.
Okay.
So we will see further information on this. You're just asking for the permission to explore this.
And so I, I just wanted to mention, you probably, all of you in your heads are wondering, what does that debt look like? And, and you know what? You can't fix a problem until you discuss it. So our debt right now is running at about $27,000 for just this year. So $27,000. And so we really, we're doing everything we can to get, to work with these families, with Rebecca Gomez, and who's our meals advocate, and this is just one more piece, and Mr. Colley's been successful with this before, so that's why he brought it up to us.
Any further questions or discussion? Dr. Flowers?
May we, I know we should not assume anything, but is there a potential that the monies who, that could be recovered, as it says here, the debt for those who don't qualify, that that monies, that is, that would be collected, just might offset the cost of getting that agency in?
In fact, there would be, yeah, there would be no money upfront. They, if they have to go all the way to the actual collection process, whatever they recover, they keep a percentage, so there'd be no cost.
So it could be, it could pay for itself, at least?
A partial, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Next we have is discussion items. We have the SMILE program up for discussion, and this was by the superintendent.
I'd like to, sorry?
No, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce Carol Engler, who's here today, and she's going to share with us information about the SMILES program that we have in our schools.
Thank you, and welcome.
And she said she has some exciting news about Newport schools, or?
It's always a pleasure to bring wonderful news to a school committee that is invested in the best education practices of its students. And it's my pleasure to tell you that for the first time, we are awarding a $500 scholarship from SMILE with the student from Rogers High School who has been in SMILE for three years. It is a program where she has had to maintain a three or greater GPA, has attended all the SMILE annual events, has had good citizenship in school, and has aimed herself for college. Her goal in the essay that she wrote to receive this scholarship, or apply for it, told us that she wanted to become a nurse anesis anesis.
Anesthetist, and that's the nurse anesthetist.
And, thank you, a nurse anesthetist. And I have met this young woman three times at our high school engineering challenge, when she has come to the University of Rhode Island. And she is a wonderful leader and a wonderful student, and we're very pleased to award her this wonderful scholarship. And I know that she will continue on and do wonderful things. And I also wanted to congratulate.
Can, can we know her name?
I'm sorry?
All right, thank you.
Very important, high school senior, Jillian Frederick.
Oh, yay, Jillian.
Congratulations, Jillian.
Our SMILE teacher this year is June McReeve, a very dedicated science librarian, and we look forward to having an even larger SMILE program at the high school. At the middle school, kids come out of the woodwork. There's no lack of children who want to do science, technology, engineering, and math. And they come on every week, and we brought them to the University of Rhode Island for the middle school challenge, and they were wonderful. They exceeded our expectations. They were enthusiastic, their behavior was outstanding. And their teachers are Elizabeth Gibbs and Candace Louie. And just, I can't say enough about the kids, or the program, or the teachers. And so it's such a pleasure to deal with them. Now, when it came to the elementary school, we have two different programs, because we've gotten so large that Alton Jones can't handle all of our fourth and fifth graders. So we take the fifth graders to Alton Jones. This was April 6th through 8th. For the first time in 23 years, it snowed. What we realized was, adults might think, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? And the kids said, oh my gosh, I can't wait to go outside and look. And they were absolutely astounding. Considering that some of them forgot to bring mittens, and you're trying to write in your data books, it got a little dicey, but we managed to bring them indoors for the final part of every activity. And they had an extraordinary time using real science equipment, and they were studying the environmental parameters of different activities, all of which are put on by University of Rhode Island students, who also add every opportunity, including campfires, which we did indoors because it was way too cold to be outside. They tell their career path, how they got to be where they are. And many of our URI students look like many of our young learners. And so that's also a wonderful role model, where if that person looks like me, and they're being successful despite all sorts of obstacles, then maybe I can do it too. So we start from young, thinking about these wonderful opportunities. And they love the science and math, and their streams and bernal pools. And one of the girls had a connoisseur from Newport, and she said we were in a forest, and the forest had had a lot of damage. I remember the last windstorms that brought down all these trees. And the young girl said, I don't think I've ever been in such a quiet, beautiful place. And I thought about that. When you come from maybe a city kind of dwelling, it isn't quiet. And she saw beauty, and that other people might have said, boy, there's a lot of destruction here, but that was not her take on it. And our fourth grade teachers and fifth grade, Lori Delamos and Mary Nordby, also brought the fourth graders, we bring them to the University of Rhode Island for a, we call it an ecology day. And they get to see the activities put on by the women in marine sciences, by the plant science people. They planted little tomato plants and brought them home. I have no idea if they're going to get the little sweet 100s, or sweet 1000s, but we hope they will. And they also got to see a bernal pool on the campus. They didn't hurt, and you're selling college education or higher education, that we bring them to the dining hall where we give them a ticket where it's an all-you-can-eat, and the ice cream flowed like water. It was so cute. But also, the dining halls are areas where kids of great diversity are all enjoying each other's company. And that's important for all of our students, whether they come from in Socrates, Westerly, Newport, Central Falls, Pawtucket, like this, and in South Kingstown, that, West Warwick, that it's important for them to see that there are wonderful people, many of whom look like them, at the university. So I congratulate you on having a lot of wonderful children doing wonderful things, and we hope to keep the program going way beyond three years, and award scholarships to many more Rogers High School seniors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol.
The next item on the agenda would be an update on the district management group, and this is, district manager was conducted a scheduling analysis. The findings are provided, as well as the scheduling options. This is a very lengthy document here, so Superintendent Germaine, if you just want to give us an overview, Mr. Sidney Williams?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, I, we have, from district management group, we have Christine Keen and Simone Carpenter. They're in the front, right here, and they're going to give you, you're right, they're very lengthy documents. We've got one about improving the Thompson Middle School schedule to support our priorities. We also have a preliminary improving secondary scheduling to cost-effectively support teaching and learning with best practices and strategic priorities. And then you have a single handout, one-pager, that Simone and Kristin were great to help as far as when we were working with Mr. Campion, and Ms. Sullivan, and Dr. Bian, when we were all looking at different ways of grouping and helping to schedule our Thompson students. So I'm going to ask Kristin and Simone to go, and they realize it's a very brief presentation, but from their experience working here in Newport with the groups, they're going to just give you some highlights, and answer any questions you may have. And they'll be around and in the district in the next couple of months as well for further information. Go ahead.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you Superintendent Germaine, and, you know, my name is Kristin Keen, I'm the director of District Management Group. This is Simone Carpenter, associate at District Management Group. We're a Boston-based company, we partner with school districts around the country, helping them solve some of their most pressing challenges, whether it be improving supports for struggling students to scheduling. And first of all, I wanted to thank you all for your time to provide you with this brief update. I know your time is valuable, and I acknowledge that those documents are lengthy, so we want to give you just, as Superintendent Germaine said, some highlights. So as we started our work in January of this year, we first started an in-depth diagnostic process. So we wanted to get to know Newport public schools, understand the current practices and scheduling, current experiences and learning opportunities students have at the middle school and at the high school. We collected a lot of data on staffing, enrollment, and courses that are offered, and we also conducted many interviews and focus groups, some with the school committee members. We also conducted focus groups with students in grades five, grade six to eight, and grades nine to 12, parents of those students in those similar grade spans, teachers both at the middle school and the high school, both general education classroom teachers and special education teachers. And also, we also went to meet with the counselors, psychologists, and social workers, those who are providing those social-emotional learning supports to students, to make sure we're getting their perspective on how time is being used in school day. All of that information we distilled and analyzed, and came up with some preliminary findings, some of it more quantitative, as you'll see in that lengthy presentation, where, you know, we talk about the numbers mostly, managing class sizes according to your enrollment more closely, or closely to your district class size targets, managing single-section, low-enrollment courses. Those are those courses where you have only one single section in a category that has maybe 10 students in it or less. And then also increasing the access to rigorous courses at the high school. So that was the quantitative side of our preliminary findings. We also shared some themes from the focus groups that we heard at a high level, both for fifth grade, the middle school, and the high school. And as I've seen, we don't come through in that one large presentation with any concrete recommendations, because we wanted to make this a collaborative process with the district leadership, with the school leadership teams, and came together to discuss all those different findings, identify what are some potential opportunities we wanted to pursue, and recognizing that we can't pursue everything at once with success. We came to the decision that for the remainder of the school year, we prioritize focusing first on the middle school schedule, which is why you'll see those two accompanying documents there, that are focused primarily on Thompson Middle School. And two of the main goals of that work are, you know, focusing on providing opportunities for intervention, enrichment for all students, and acceleration for all students in ELA and math, and then placing the fifth grade schedule on the same schedule as grade six to eight at Thompson Middle School. That was a very prominent pain point we heard from staff, students, and parents as well. Some of our next steps include, you know, having some coaching calls and thought-partner calls with the middle school principal, and assistant principal, and Superintendent Germaine, and Ms. Barron, as we go into refining the schedule for the middle school in the next year. They're already putting their heads together, coming up with some different ideas, and you can see some of the different model options we also provided, just to help with their thought process. We'll also be taking a deeper look at the access that students have at the high school to rigorous courses. So we're going to be going particularly in-depth to the advanced placement courses, seeing the access that students have there. And we'll also be turning our focus, as we move into the next school year, to assisting the district in thinking about the high school schedule, or scheduling practices that may come about as some areas to change, particularly in helping through work, the work that the Bar Foundation High School redesign group is focused on. And of course, last but not least, as we move into the next school year, we'll be helping progress monitor these efforts on making changes to the middle school schedule, and any minor changes to the high school schedule, to see what the impact that it's having on students, and the impact it's having on staff.
I know that one of the presentations coming up next is the scheduling for the high school, and I know there's been a lot of discussion with the middle school, but you guys are not done, obviously, we're, are we in the middle potentially of this? Because I'm understanding and hearing, although we may not, we're going to hear very shortly about the scheduling at the high school, that it may not be the best program, but due to the timing and the application process for the students, that, that, that whatever decisions we make need to be much earlier on in the year than this late in the game. And that's something I know that this, I mean, I'll speak- And that's something I know that this, I mean, I'll speak for a lot of the committee, is very concerned about the scheduling at the high school. But I do, I am hearing that it might be a little late to do something like that due to the enrollment. So as long as we're still having active discussions with that, I mean, that's basically what we were hoping to get, is to build a better system over there. So any further, I mean, are there any other questions?
Just to, just to kind of set the stage as well, part of focusing on the middle school is because the middle school is feeding into the high school.
Right.
And it has to do with the curriculum, when we have certain courses offered, and how we're going to have that curriculum alignment, middle school through high school. So that was very, that was part of the work at the middle school, and that's why the staff was thinking we should start here. With at the same time, and Simone and Kristin are very aware of the career and tech challenges with our general ed and our AP courses. So that's going to take some time, and the Bar Foundation work as well.
And then as far as involvement, I know that the superintendent has been having several meetings with a lot of parents from the middle school after the radical change in the school. And then they've somewhat modified that and offered some other courses to help try to satisfy the needs of some of these high and performing children. Are these discussions, are these discussions you're actually having with these parent groups as well as the staff and the students, particularly in the middle school area?
I would say that the discussions that Superintendent Germaine is having with those middle school parents are very aligned with the themes we heard from our focus groups with the parents at the middle school. So she's been having a lot of conversations with the parents relating to us what the decisions she's making out of that. And we're then providing the scheduling support on thinking about how could the master schedule or the model be adjusted to accommodate not only students who require intervention help, but those students who require enrichment and acceleration. And then to your other point earlier, I think, you know, this is the middle of the process. That's a two-year engagement that we have with Newport Public Schools. And, you know, while I think there are opportunities for making adjustments to the high school schedule, and you'll hear a little bit about that from Principal Vance later, it's important to go about any drastic or larger scale changes in a thoughtful way. We want to make sure that any of those are, you know, engaging staff and parents and students in the process. And so the timeframe that we had in the spring was a little too short for that. So the focus this year is on the middle school and then at the high school, making some smaller adjustments and tweaks to make the schedule more efficient and effective in the upcoming school year.
And then I'm not trying to control the questions here. I'll open it up. But my concerns are that effectively, we will be getting, I would imagine, an opportunity to sit down with you and we can start to go over, along with the staff and the decision-makers, concrete thoughts. And, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, obviously, is what we're looking for to see if your practices, which you're viewing, how big of a, how big of a universe are you comparing us to? I know we're a little unique in the community that we have, but as far as the practices and the scheduling and things like that. So, I mean, that's our hope, or at least my hope, is that we're going to get some of those concrete suggestions in an early enough timeframe that we can insert them into our schedule so that there's plenty of time to get this done. And I mean, is that part of the overall process?
I believe so. You know, I think we'll be planning on the next phase, you know, as we move into July 1st, the next school year, engaging in some of those conversations, having some, you know, sharing out these findings in greater detail in a smaller setting, and then helping facilitate the discussions about what would be, you know, a better schedule or better scheduling practices to employ, and to your point, doing it early enough so that it can be properly planned and implemented for the following year.
Ms. Bowlen?
I noticed that you make, you know, some not suggestions or just you put out some potential for, you know, reallocating FTEs, which are full-time employees. So you don't see that happening this coming year at all, of changing anything? Or do we, do we see that as a possibility at the middle school? It's still a possibility, so, okay. Just because if we have to, not that anybody loves layoffs, but they have to be done by June 1st, so it's, we're under a time restraint right here. And we're also under some serious financial crunches, so. Okay.
Any other questions for the group? Thank you very much. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
We do as well. Thank you. Thank you, Rogers High School.
The next item on discussion will be scheduling for Rogers, Thompson, and Pell.
Principal Vance, you're up.
Thanks. So we've been, we've been having conversations around schedule in the building since probably December. And we've been working with junior representation in the building, teaching staff, and administration. And we've, you know, there have been multiple iterations of what a potential schedule would look like for next year. And, you know, to be honest, it's really kind of a hot topic in the building, and it's hard to get consensus where everybody's on the same page with what we're looking for for next year. Being that we are a traditional high school on layered on top of a career and tech program that has sending students from outside districts, there are many, many factors that come into our schedule that not everybody at the table necessarily understands. You know, there, there were schedules in the past that worked at that time, but then there were requirements that came in through the CTE programs or how those programs were scheduled for field, fieldwork, job sites, back-to-back periods of time where they needed more than just a traditional 48-minute block. They needed 90 minutes, and they needed that period every day. So there were a lot of, there were a lot of things that came into play. So one of the, the last schedule that we really talked about at our faculty meeting, and again, we didn't really come to consensus on it, was this, it was still a seven-period day. And I know we, there are a lot of conversations about increasing the length of time for the teaching periods during the day and reducing the amount of periods that are taught from a seven to a six or maybe to a five. But what happens with making those changes, we start to limit kids' options for when they, when they're looking at college and career. So in the present time, we have, students have, need access to our four core content areas, so that's English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And then on top of that, they need to have access to physical education. If we had a student, if we reduced the amount of periods that we had in a day to six, our students that participated in our NAC Tech programs would basically be choosing whether they're going to go career or college by taking those NAC Tech classes, right? Because that would pick up two periods of their six-period day. And so that would limit their ability to choose, like world language, which many colleges are looking for. And so we've tried on multiple occasions to kind of work through a schedule that would provide all of those things. And so what we've come to is that seven-period schedule. There's a rotation in the morning to kind of eliminate some of the redundancy of having the same kids all the time, first, first period of the day. And then there would be a rotation in the afternoon, which would limit that redundancy about like having the kids at the last period of the day, or having that, you know, that same repetitive schedule day in and day out. We have, we've proposed building in advisory, which would happen, we can do it on a three-day rotation, so that could be built, that's built in as well, which is more than what we have presently. You know, so there are a lot of details that we were taking into consideration when we're talking about schedule for next year. And I think you guys have a version of the schedule.
Yeah, I guess one of the questions I have is, I don't know how they did it when I was in school, but I did both paths. Career Tech was there in 84, 83 through 87, when I graduated, and I was on both paths. I was in college prep, but I also went full-time to career. I don't understand, I don't think it's a reinvention of the wheel. I just don't know what the scheduling was back then. And conceptually, I have a, but I do understand that if we're getting enrollment, it's hard to do a switch and then mess with it. But I, I personally want to work harder at making the system work, because it did work before. I mean, I don't know that I would have been any smarter if I went to school today than when I did back then. I don't know if anything changed for me. And if I didn't have Career Tech, I probably wouldn't have graduated. So, I mean, I, I just think, I'd like you guys to work a lot, personally, I want you guys to work a lot harder with the group and with the parents and with the kids and try to figure it out. So, I mean, I understand you're working at it, and I appreciate that, so.
And so that, and that's one of the reasons why we're kind of stuck with that seven-period right now. We're also looking for recommendations from the DM group as well as the Bar work that's going to happen through the summer time into next year, to have those committees come together and look at, how does our schedule work for both buildings and support all of our students so they can have those opportunities of a career and tech path, or college, or, you know, double-dip and get both? You know, so we're looking at all those things. And so we didn't want to get away from what we have and make a dramatic change right now when potentially there could be changes coming down the pipe from either one of those organizations.
Ms. Bowlen?
Yeah, I've got like five, five things on my list here, but I've been looking forward to this. But first of all, I think the other night was very clear that when we listened to the students speak about how powerful the contact was with adults. And I think that message, like, can we not have advisory every day for 10 minutes? Couldn't it just be the first 10 minutes of the day? Having an adult check in with kids, hey, you know, how are your assignments going? Like, let's look at your grades, like, what's going on at home? It's so powerful, I, you know, that I think that we should just look at that as an everyday thing. And, you know, when the one student told the story about she was, you know, that somebody emailed her and said, "Where were you yesterday?" You know, like, that, to me, is like, like, all the things we've tried to do to increase attendance, that could be the most powerful thing that could get done, is to have advisory every day for like 10 minutes. Okay, that's my first thing. Second thing is, we right now, with a seven-period day, that means the kids graduate with 28 credits. They could graduate with 28 credits, right? But you only need 20 to graduate. So it's a very expensive, like, what we're doing is very expensive to, to, even though we only have 20 credits necessary, but we're offering 28, you know? So we need to look at that, you know, is that a great use of money to be doing that? Because you have to have the number of teachers we have now in order to offer the seven periods a day. Okay? So seven, we're just going to say a seven-period schedule, whether it's every day or whatever. Okay, that was one. And then my other, and then it also allows kids to, you know, potentially not pass eight classes and have to repeat them. So, what? Yeah?
Honestly, I'd have to look at how that plays out. I'm not.
Yeah, I've been working on it, though. Because, because it really, okay, then the next thing is pacing guides. Because when we went to longer periods, what happened was, I don't know that a lot of pacing guides exist in the high school curriculum. And so you had teachers who did not, did not know how to utilize a period, right? Because you have to pace differently when you're meeting only one and a half, you know, three and a half times a week. So that's going to be really important, that we have PD for pacing and that we have pacing guides if we're going to go to longer and shorter periods.
Right. Yeah, so that, so some of what you're talking about is work that's already in play. We're creating year-in-a-glance for all of our courses right now. And so to your point, if we were going to lengthen the periods every day, we would need professional development around it. It's vastly different teaching in a block than it is teaching in a 48-minute period. So if we quickly made that shift right now, I don't think we would be prepared necessarily to teach in the block come September. You know, it is, it is a shift in pedagogy that needs to take place. Some of the things that you're talking about with pacing guides and that kind of work, that's where some of that RCT time would be, be used?
Do you want me to say what RCT?
Oh, CPT, Common Planning Time. It's when you get a group of teachers together that look at their curriculum and instruction and data and talk about student success and strategies that are successful. And that's also time where we would use during the day to move any of these initiatives forward, right? And so we would be looking at the pacing guides. We would look at our assessments. We would look at the results from formative assessments. And then we would look at the instructional practices that are happening around those assessments and how do we tweak those? You know, so much of what you say, what you're mentioning makes sense, and it's things that we've thought about. It's just we can't, we can't make those changes so quickly and not have people prepared for those setups. So like the advisory every day, I would love to get to a place where we have advisory every day, but we need a viable curriculum that's going to support having kids an advisory period every day through the course of a school year.
Isn't it right now, how many periods, is it 30 minutes a week right now?
Right now it is. And I'm the curriculum. I provide lessons and activities every week for that one period. To do that on a weekly.
Right, but in 10 minutes, you wouldn't have to do as mu, you know, as much, because you're, you really want the connection going on. Check in, check out, there we go.
Right.
So I'm just saying, or even seven minutes. I just, like, I just think that, that connection with an adult every day is so important.
I agree. Ms. Gaines?
I just want to put a plug in for electives. Even though the state might require 22 credits for graduation, you can, well, whatever. I'm just using that as a what-if. The district can put whatever above that that they choose. And when we're talking about kids being prepared for either career or college, they need more than those basic requirements. And if we don't provide time and opportunity for electives, we are really selling our kids short. So we have to keep them in.
They're taking notes.
Mr. Gomes?
So I just had a question. Going from last year to this year, I know there was a reason for the seven-period switch, and I believe it had some integration with the Career Tech and the traditional school, as you said. It's probably a good time to ask, what was the issue? What, what was the issue with Career Tech meshing or incorporating into the traditional school period time-wise that we had to make the switch?
So the initial change is when we changed the Newport start time versus the sending district start time, it didn't match up with the, with the other schedule. And we also, prior to that, we also had students in some of the Career and Tech programs that weren't in the class together for the whole time. So he would have students come, be, then, you know, have a large group together, and then students leave the class. So it's hard for, you know, the double blocks to really to focus on, you know, for construction, for example. He wasn't able to spend as much time off-site because of the way students were coming and leaving in that, in that program. So he didn't, yeah, that was before the time change. And it was, we really had to align our Career and Tech curriculum and programs with what Ride was putting out and with the NEAS visit coming up to make sure that the, the classes were consistent. So they weren't, so right now, in the two, we have a double block for, for a lot of our programs. In that double block in the past, students weren't staying for the entire double block. So they may have been there for two periods, they may have been in there for one period, but the class was actually a two-period class. So it created disruption, you know, throughout that class.
Okay, I'll probably have to get more detail on that than I'm getting right now, but I'll take that answer for now. Secondly, with that meshing of the traditional school, as you just called it, and the Career Tech, I know there's a couple in the state that are similar to ours. What, what schedule do those schools use?
Most of them are on block. The ones, so block schedule is they'll take eight classes, and there'll be an A and a B day, and they'll have four periods a day for the extended time, 90 minutes, 88 minutes, depending on where you are. There's also some that have an additional zero period to add to allow some of the CTE kids to do some things. But the, like Charahoe and Coventry are on block schedule, so that's, it's an A and B rotation.
Is that, where does that, is that anything similar to what we had either last year? I know it's not the seven, we've never had that?
I don't, I've only been here for, I'm only on 26 months.
Okay. Feels longer.
One of the challenges, and this group can help us, we have a small amount, I believe, I mean, we have a pretty large group at the Career Tech overall, like maybe 400-plus students. And then maybe a handful of much smaller, maybe 5% to 8% roughly, that are not full-time students at Rogers High School. So where are our challenges and how much are we putting that into the group to help mold and figure out how we're going to fix that? Because I don't believe, I don't want to believe, and sometimes I do believe, that we might be molding that system to accommodate a very small number of students who aren't full-time students. And that is my deep concern, that we need to fabric- full-time students. And that is my deep concern, that we need to fabricate the system for the students that are here all the time, so that our students overall are getting the best bang for their buck, and we're not trying to squeeze in just a couple of more students from other sending districts. And maybe the conversation is had with those, those students that, you know, we'd love to have you as full-time students, so we can do the best for all of our kids, and not, not flip it and try and fix it for, I mean, I'd love to have all the kids come into the school, but if we're flipping it, and it's a challenge because there's a handful of 10, or a small percentage, then, and again, I'll probably have this conversation, I've been talking to the superintendent, we want to sit down, this will be the forum eventually, but I think fact-finding, or, you know, gathering and working with the group is something that I just need to have in my head clear, because I don't completely understand it, that's all.
No, we, Mr. Vance and I have met a number of times, and I've always said, it's not, we're not dictating the schedule based on 25 students, but we're not gonna do that. There are 357 students that are in CTE right now. So there's 55% of the students at Rogers High School are involved in some type of career tech education. So it is, the majority of the students at the high school are involved in, in career tech. So, you know, it is, it's not easy to do, but we are, you know, really banging our heads and putting our heads together to figure out a way to make this work.
Any other questions?
I just have one more.
Ms. Boland?
Would it make it easier if our, if we made our career tech program full-time? So that, like, other districts, I'm seeing some people shake, like, good. So, I mean, just making it full-time, no option for part-time. So would we have less kids coming, or would it make it easier to get them?
We don't know, but we haven't had to make that decision yet. If we have to, and we have to say to the students that you have to come full-time, you know, we can do that. I mean, if that's an obstacle, that, that has to happen, we can make that happen. I mean, that's fine, but, you know, that hasn't dictated the schedule yet. That's not a, you know, determining factor on this seven-period rotation.
Because I know that in Portsmouth, they make them full-time. Yeah, we, yeah, so.
I think the, the other thing I just wanted to share with you, that the Rhode Island Department of Ed actually looks at the Newport area Career and Technical Center, how we offer CTE programs to students, and give choice, lots of different choice, as far as part-time, full-time. I believe Mr. Young gets applauded all the time about that, and they ask people to go talk to you about it. Isn't that true?
Yeah, they, they do like the model. Some career tech centers are all part-time, regardless of, you know, of where you are. They only, students come from all different districts and just spend their CTE time, then go back to their home school there. So there's a lot of different models out there, it's just we have to find one that fits, you know, for all of our needs.
I think this will probably be on the next agenda, absolutely, and with further discussion and work, and help and input from it, because it's, the career tech and the high school have to mesh. That's my baby, so. We'll make it work. I appreciate you guys putting the time and effort into it, and I know you're prepared for all the tough questions we'll give you. We'll, we'll reserve that for a sidebar, and then we can bring our findings out into the public. But, I mean, is there any further questions? But thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Superintendent Jermaine, we didn't hear about Thompson, but it's on the agenda.
Right. You do, you do have, well, you have Thompson as far as what District Management Group shared with you, as far as the work they're doing, and especially looking at the meeting all children's needs, those that are struggling, and those that want enrichment. You also have a copy of a tentative schedule that they've been working on. It's in black and white, it's Monday through Friday. And you can see, they're, they're trying, and Thompson, as Mr. Vance is trying at Rogers, to keep, get common planning time for all the grade levels, so that, as at Rogers, they're going to continue having facilitated, focused professional development and discussions during the school day about instruction and about curriculum. So Dr. Bean has already started the discussions. As you heard, there's Year at a Glance, that actually this year, we're asking our middle school and all our schools. Pell already has them up on the website, and middle school and high school, we're asking them to do. But we're gonna be focusing more, too, on the instruction in the classroom and helping to support teachers. So this is their tentative draft. We'll be looking at it more in the next month. And to Mrs. Boland's question, we're already looking at staffing and the different models.
And are these tentative schedules available to the parents and students yet, or is this something, I mean, input-wise, and discussion level-wise, and things of that nature, so that we can inform the families that are coming to the school, and the kids, and what have you, what it might look like?
Right. We did, I did ask, at the end of May, and at the second week of June, for information to be going out, specifically on, but Mr. Campion and Ms. Sullivan want to also make sure they're going over this with the staff, but to send it out to families. And so everyone's really clear, before anyone goes home for the summer, what the process is, and what the schedule's gonna be.
So this will hopefully be going out prior to June, I hope, because I think pretty much everybody checks out in June.
Right, one step, one, step one's going out, but then the follow-up to step one, and where we are, is going out, second week of June, I believe.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you. The next would be review of process to post and fill positions. I believe Human Resources Director Nancy Markie is here to offer some suggestions and have some discussion on this.
Yes, Nancy Markie, our HR Director, is here this evening, and she's sharing with you, she and Dr. Colley have been working very hard. We're trying to set up, I think you call it a personal assignment. Go ahead. I'm gonna let you take over.
Okay, so one of the things that, this one? One of the things that Dr. Colley and I have been working on is position control. And as you know, part of the posting process is we send them out, email to all of the employees, but you also get copies of them. And when Dr. Colley and I first came, this was the process where you just signed off on the job description. So the job description will still be sent out to all the employees, and I know there was a little box here that said, was it budgeted or not? And so what Dr. Colley and I are trying to do is keep better control and count of the positions. And so I know sometimes when I send out notices, I get back in email asking, where's the money? Where's it, you know, with the budget? And so the forms that, I hope that are in your package tonight, they're, okay, it's a Position Action Request, or PAR form. And so this will go along with the postings, and it's really just for your benefit, because the employees, although they've actually shown more interest in it than I thought they did, because they're correcting my misspelling of some of the employee names. But, like, the custodian, we have some vacancies in custodians, so this will be attached to the posting, and you'll see it's a custodian. Dr. Colley's worked very hard to try to get a position number assigned to every single position in the, in the school. And so it's a Pell custodian, it starts with a P, it's C-U-S for custodian number two. And so we'll know at any particular time, there's five custodians, five custodians at Pell, it'd be P custodian one through five, and this particular person held the position of P custodian two. So that may not mean anything to you, but it means something to Dr. Colley and I. And then we can see where the funding comes from to get to, I guess what you're really interested in, is that if it's a vacant position, that box would be checked, and then you can see why is it vacant, vacant? Who held that position? And the name of the last incumbent would be on there. And then, so what I do is, when I find out who the incumbent is, I look at that funding source, and that should still be the funding source for the, for whoever replaces that position, unless there's been a change in the funding source. So I know now we put, like, local, which I don't know what that means to you. Doesn't really mean anything to me, except it's not a grant, I guess. But now you can look at the Position Action Request Form and see exactly what account the salary line, or whatever we're doing, is coming from. And we still have the three sign-off authorizations, the Appointing Authority, myself, the Dr. Colley, and the Superintendent. And then at the bottom, like, you might see there's a vacant position, and then I might follow, I might put another vacant position up the next week, which is happening here, and you might say, why is there another vacant position? And you can look down at the bottom and see, oh, there was a transfer from one position into another position. So it's really just to keep you more in the loop, a better accounting of where the budget, the positions are and the budgeting is. And I just wanted to come and tell you tonight that you're gonna be seeing these, in case you have, in case you wonder what it is, these are what these forms mean. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
So as far as, like, personnel actions, which are coming up, and you have the backup data, these will now be a portion of that, so it would be helpful for any one of us reviewing or preparing for the meeting. We would know that it was budgeted, we would know what line it's coming out of.
Correct.
Things of that nature.
Yeah, Dr. Colley and I are still working on making sure the lines are correct. But, so we don't just look at the line that's existing, we also look and say, is that the right department? Is the right salary line, is that the right? So, you know, we're still doing some cleanup.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Markie and Dr. Colley have put a lot of time and effort. So in this way, you'll have, like, a warrant of all the positions we have, the FTEs, and where they're funded from, and you'll see the lines that the money's coming from.
Excellent, thank you. That's gonna be helpful. The next discussion item would be 18 and 19 budget. This was asked to be on the agenda by Mr. Gomes, and I believe that we have Dr. Colley gonna come in here and then give us a little overview of the upcoming budget, which will open it up for some discussion. Dr. Colley?
So we provided you with basically a preliminary draft of what the budget would be looking like for next year. I did go through pretty much every line in the, thousands of lines in the budget, and gave you an idea of the comparison between 17, 18, the beginning of the year, 18, where I'm projecting will be at the end of June, and then the projection for 19. This includes salary, benefits, and some of the known changes to the expense lines. So what I did is I put the salaries, benefits, and the different types of expense lines by category, and explained why were there increases or not in each one of those categories of lines. So it really compacts the thousands of lines in the budget to these categories. And so if you have the ability to go in, and we'll discuss a little bit more what that would look like when we look at the, the expense report for this month, we'll eventually be able to break it down, not just by category of line, but also by department, superintendents, the different buildings, business, special ed.
Do we have questions for Dr. Colley?
Question. Well, are we addressing this now, or are we addressing this during the overview of the revenue expenditure report?
Well, I believe this is, what, a projection of what's coming up, and then we'll get into the revenue expenditure report? I mean, I'm sure we can talk about it then as well, but I don't...
Yeah, this is the tentative for next year.
Okay. Okay. All right, great. I believe this next item from Ms. Boland, 6.6, we wanted to request that this be postponed.
Yes, we're gonna, we need to see if we can hold this off till June. We have to do a once-a-year reporting per our policy manual, and per federal guidelines. You have to report out on your, on how your health and wellness. And this was a report done by a, a group in Connecticut that came, and, and we're, we want to go into it a little deeper, the health and wellness group, because it was a self-reporting, and we just want to make sure that we feel it's accurate before we present it to you. So we'd like to wait till next month.
So with no further discussion, we will put that on the next month's agenda.
Yes.
The next is consent agenda. We have the approval amendment, 7.1.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with, with one deletion. The superintendent has asked that we remove item 72A from the consent.
2A2.
I'm sorry, 72A2 from the consent agenda this evening.
So the, the motion was made to approve with the retraction from the superintendent of 72A2. The motion was made by Mrs. Gaines?
No.
I mean, I'm sorry, Raymond Gomes, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Is there discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move passage of the consent agenda.
Oh, yes, formally. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you. That's unanimous. Monthly correspondence, communication from BAR. We have a grant from the BAR Association. It says, "I am pleased to inform you that the BAR Foundation has awarded a grant of $300,000 to Newport Public Education Fund. This grant will have a duration of 14 months, with a start date of May 18, 2018, and end July 18 of 2019. The purpose of this grant is to support Newport Public Schools' effort to support instructional school culture transformation at Rogers High School. The enclosed grant agreement describes the terms and conditions of the grant. Please review this document. We are delighted to be able to contribute to this important work, and we look forward to hearing about your progress during the grant term." And I just want to say thanks for the application process, and certainly the receiving of such a generous grant that's going to help with this, this restructuring of the high school.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Gaines?
Why does this grant go through NPEF and not directly to the school?
Because the foundation does not give directly to public schools?
Oh.
And it gives to, so it's giving to the NPEF.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
The next, we have reports from the superintendent and staff. And the first two reports, we can, we can talk about these consecutively. It would be 9.1 and 9.2. This is expenditure and revenue reports, and then the public school restricted grants report, and both of these things are presented by Dr. Colley. Dr. Colley?
Okay. So beginning with the expenditure report, this month, I'm giving you two looks at the same budget. So you have the, you have the usual look that breaks down the categories of salaries, benefits, and the different categories of expenditures, using the UCOA account number, 51,0110, and so on. Our, my concern has been all along, looking at this, that it's difficult to establish where are the changes to the budget occurring. So if you have, for example, in one, two, three, seven lines, $22 million worth of salaries, it's very difficult to see where the salary changes are occurring. For that reason, I gave you a look that I know we discussed with the Finance Advisory Committee, and we took a look at breaking those accounts instead of by category, breaking them by cost centers, which would be the superintendent's or central office, teaching and learning, technology, special ed, and then the schools themselves, so that it gives you a better idea of where are the salaries, where are the benefits being spent, the contracts, the supplies, and so on. So looking overall at the budget, we're looking at, we have about 19% left of the budget for two months. Figure each month, we spend about 10%, maybe a little bit more. So we've controlled a little bit, the expenditures from here till the end of the year. Staff are now at the building level, actually using encumbrances, so we have a little bit better control of saying whether we're gonna be able to spend more money in certain things this year, or whether we hold off until the beginning of next year. The budget is tight, I'll say that. And we're still looking at, you know, the, the budget in terms of salaries and benefits all the way to the end of the year. There, as Nancy mentioned, we're still even cleaning up some of the issues in Lawson, where things were put in years ago and never changed. So we're trying to do that at this point as we go through. I would like some feedback in terms of, is the expenditure report by department something that you want to see? Is this something that is helpful? Because I do believe it may actually answer some questions along the lines of, where are the expenditures happening, and what's causing those changes?
Mrs. Gaines?
I'm just frustrated with my technology.
So I would start by saying that I'd like the one broken out by department, obviously that... obviously that's come out of the Finance Subcommittee, and it's something that they felt gave them a tool to better understand the spending through the course of the year, where it's being spent, how it's being spent. Clearer picture than the former expenditure report, which quite honestly had a lot of areas of spending that nobody really had a concern with, broke it down to too much detail at some point. So I would start by saying, I personally, I like the second one broken out by departments for several reasons that I've just expressed.
Does make more sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carlin?
Help me understand on the first line, the personnel salaries component of the personnel, uh, the very first line, it's easily, easily enough said.
Which of the two reports?
I'm sorry, the original, the reports you normally send, the expenditure and revenue report. My, uh, I'll give you a moment to pull that up, because my, my report is a bit faded here, uh, but I think I already did the numbers. Do you have that report in front of you? So the budgeted line item for salaries for fiscal eighteen was, if I recall correctly, was some, somewhere around twenty-two million five? Is that right?
All of them put together, yes. All the salaries.
Salaries. Salaries for our personnel who work for...
Yes.
What do you mean by all of them put together?
In the, in the first report, it gets broken out by...
I'm sorry, yes.
Regular salaries, subs, and so on. So, yeah, the total is about...
So the salaries you pay are twenty-two million five hundred thousand? Is that the figure around?
Twenty-two six.
Okay. We're, we're through ten, uh, months of the fiscal year. If you divide twenty-two million five or twenty-two million six, I can't see it again, I apologize, but if you divide that by ten, we come up with a figure, uh, that we have spent approximately each month.
Approximately, yes.
Would you, would you agree with that?
Except that you do have some staff that get paid twelve months, so there's some adjustment you have to do there.
But the fiscal year begins on July first of seventeen and ends on June thirtieth.
Yes.
So either way we look at it, we only have two more months. You can't go beyond June thirtieth, so...
Yes. That is correct.
We're going through ten months. So if you divide twenty-two million six hundred thousand by ten months, I don't know what you get, but when I then, well, actually, I, I do know what you get. Uh, when I took the remaining two fiscal, uh, two months in the fiscal year left, and I used the figure that we have appeared to have spent each month, I come up with about three million, three hundred forty-five thousand dollars in additional spending. Yet we have somewhere around four point two million dollars dedicated for the remainder of the year. So I have two questions. What unexpected expenditures, or what do you see happening between the three point three four five million and the four point two million that we have left over? And why are you proposing a budget for fiscal nineteen, which not only exceeds, uh, the, year-to-date spending for fiscal eighteen plus the three point three four five, meaning why are you, why are you proposing a budget for fiscal nineteen that exceeds the twenty-two million six hundred thousand dollars for salaries? We have no, uh, commitment contractually for raises. Where is the, uh, where is the intended spending going?
So are you asking, the first question is, what happens between now and June thirtieth? The second question, if I understand it correctly, is why the increase in next year's?
First question, I'll be, I'll be more specific. Do you expect us to spend in the next two months, May and June, more than three point three four five million dollars on salaries?
Yes.
Why?
The way you calculated it, the problem is this, the bulk of our salaries are spent in the ten months between September and June. So if you take the months of July and August, and you just divide it out by ten months, it reduces the amount that you're actually spending per month, because during those two months, there's only the few administrators, custodians, and a few secretaries in place. So you do end up spending more on a per, per payroll or per month. It's not quite per month, because there's, the last month in June, there's three payrolls. So when you add it all up, yes, I do think we will use the funding that's available for staff. Now, in terms of next year, what I did is I went in and, yes, um, we have a, a number in there that, because we're in negotiations, I'm not gonna put out there on the table, but there is a number in there, because if we negotiate next year with the unions, um, there will be an increase, and if I don't project it out, then I'm sure it won't be in the budget, and therefore, we'd be running into negotiations with what I would consider an unfair labor practice, because you don't have money to negotiate with. So you have to put something in there. So there's a, a, a number increase for each and every staff member. So literally, I took every person, took their salary, multiply it, and that's where the numbers were arrived at.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the unions who are negotiating with us simply be able to pull the public documents and look at the difference between spending on the salaries in fiscal eighteen and spending on the salaries in fiscal nineteen, and determine what the pot of money is for fiscal nineteen raises?
They may be able to, um, estimate, as anybody with a good calculator could, however, that the way in which that pot of money gets divided, as you can see under the old one, so for example, you have regular salaries, substitutes, overtime, vacation, additional compensation, severance stipends. They don't know what those increases are, or they may be able to try to project them out. And in addition, you have people who are not in the union, who would be getting some increase. Sometimes there's already contracts in place that have been negotiated with, for example, administrators, so we know what those increases are, and for some, we don't. So they may come with an approximation, but the name of the game is, you know, what do we get for what we offer at the negotiation table?
We only have sixteen thousand dollars in committed increases to administrators for fiscal nineteen that I'm aware of. Are you aware of something else? We have three, all our contracts end for administrators, with the exception of three on June thirtieth of eighteen. We haven't negotiated new contracts yet, I don't think.
Excuse me.
So we, we have sixteen thousand in obligations for the three who are going beyond June thirtieth of eighteen. Is that right, or, or am I wrong?
I, I believe they end in twenty nineteen. We have two extensions for this year, just two.
Two, okay. I thought it was three. All right.
However...
They're TBD.
They're, they're to be determined, so there is a number in there as well, in case it gets negotiated with the individuals for an increase.
Okay. So in synopsis, July and August, we paid less money on a monthly basis in salaries than we do September through the end of April.
Yes.
What's, what's the approximate difference, if you know, between what we pay in July and what we pay? See, for the last, so for the last eight months at least, we've had a fairly consistent number each month. We haven't had dramatic changes within our salary line item.
Remember, it's not necessarily by month, it's by the number of payrolls. So in June, you're gonna have a third payroll.
But it comes out in the wash, once you, once you go over, I mean, it's an old expression, but if you're looking at, at March, and then you look subsequently at May, if you went to six payrolls, or five payrolls, or three payrolls, it balances itself out when you do a divider by three months, or by four months, or by six months. So I'm looking at the seven-month backend process, and I'm just trying to figure out, is that the three point three four five million per month?
The, the issue is, you cannot do it that way, because in the month of March, if you have two payrolls, and let's say each payroll is a million and a half, you end up with three million dollars. But in the month of May, you may end up with three million dollars worth of salary payments. But in the month of June, you're gonna end up with four point five, because there's three payrolls in that month. So you can't just use a, a regular, this is what you're gonna pay every month, you gotta do it by the number of payrolls. We have five left.
Okay, but is it fair to say that once you go far enough on a three-month basis, or even a six-month basis, that you can, you can divide that and come up with a number?
I wouldn't do it that way, because it's...
Never mind, I, never mind, I take it back. I have one last question. You talked earlier about finding some, well, actually, I have two last questions. Talked earlier about finding some items, uh, that have been apparently tucked away in the budget somewhere, or have been, uh, for some reason or another, not accounted for properly? Is, is that the correct phrase? Uh, what are you, what are you speaking of there?
So, for example, um, there were a couple of salaries being paid out of incorrect lines. So you may have it in one department, but the person got transferred to a different department, like from Pell to Thompson, but the person's salary was left in Pell. So we're trying to move salary and the budget to the correct line, which would be in a Thompson account. You have one that we know of that was in a grant that really should have been in our budget, so we had to move that from the grant to the budget.
How much was that? What was that for?
And that, I'm sorry?
What, what was that particular, I assume the grant ran out?
Yes.
Okay, what was the grant for?
That was, um, I wanna say PTEC.
PTEC?
PTEC grant.
Who did that come from?
The state.
Yeah. I asked about that. Superintendent Jermaine, you told us that we had that money. You said the state was gonna take care of it. Is, was that not true?
Um, that salary did, that money did come, uh, last year, and it came in, and it was applied to last year. So part of the, as all the way from the beginning with the sustainability plan, is the increase in enrollment in PTEC was to cover the salary. And so we have more enrollment in PTEC, and that additional revenue is coming in to cover the salary.
When you said it was for last year, you took from fiscal seventeen or fiscal eighteen?
Fiscal seventeen.
Fiscal seventeen. So we haven't had any money coming in from the state since fiscal seventeen. When I asked the question last year, I was told that we were gonna get the money from the state for fiscal eighteen.
No, no, no.
And that's a two hundred thousand dollar...
No, it's not.
The, the PTEC grants get renewed, but every year, you have to apply for the grants. And in those grants, you have to tell the state what it is you're going to use the money for. So it's not that money hasn't come this year, money has come this year, and will probably come next year as well. However, the money wasn't, the salary account wasn't moved to the general fund, which we have now done. So where you see the current budget as it stands, it's been corrected. I'm just saying, that's the kind of work that we've been doing as I go line by line in the budget, to make sure that the person, the account, and the budget all match.
Understood, and I, and I commend that work. I, I just wanna make sure, we're getting, we are to expect the two hundred thousand dollars for fiscal eighteen for PTEC, correct?
No.
No. I just wanna, I just, all I'm looking for is a yes or a no. I was told yes ten months ago, ten and a half months ago, now I'm being told no. What's the answer?
Well, PTEC was two hundred thousand last year. I, let's see if I can find out what it is this year.
And see, I mentioned this at the time that we were renewing the principal's contract, and I said, we were given two hundred thousand dollars by the state, and that if the state didn't renew the contract, or didn't renew the grant, we were going to have to take it out of our general budget. And it appears as though, uh, we, we haven't done that for whatever reason, and now we are correcting it, which is good, but let's make sure that we understand that we were told that money was coming in, we don't have it.
Right.
What we have is two program grants. One is the CTA categorical aid, which for this year was forty-nine thousand dollars. It has come in. We have spent thirty-six thousand of that, again, as per the, the way the grant was written. And we also have a portion, and I'm not gonna say it's the whole thing, because it doesn't all come to us, of the Perkins grant, which is also CTE program. And for this year, it was two hundred and sixteen thousand, of which we have spent a hundred and thirty-six. But the way it was written this year, as part of the plan to us taking over ownership of some of the CTE expenses, we were supposed to move the salary portion of that person and from the grant to the general fund. That wasn't done when the budget was created last year, in June, July, whenever it was finalized. So we have moved that, and that's, it's a correction.
So maybe I am misunderstanding how the PTEC money is being classified. I'm speaking very specifically about the money that was dedicated from the Rhode Island Commerce Corporation in the form of a grant. Perkins is a very separate, as I understand it, set of grants, and there are all sorts of conditions for receiving Perkins money. This money had nothing to do with Perkins. This came from the Commerce's own line item as part of the Rhode Island General Fund. And in the first year that we received the money, my concern was, when the grant runs out, we will then have to come up with another two hundred thousand. So the Commerce Department's money that they sent to us, have they given us that money outside of Perkins? I understand the CTE component. I'm, I'm looking for the Commerce Department money that came to us for two straight years, two straight fiscal years, in the form of a grant, and then ended, apparently.
Even though those grants end, there's always, well, not always, I'm, I'm gonna hold back on that promise, there's other grants that get renewed every year. This seems to be one of them. We had another fifty thousand dollars, this forty-nine thousand twenty-seven, this year.
But we had, that, that money was committed to something else, though. I mean, yes, we do get, we do get things, we do get grants that are renewed, but if you have a grant dealing with, uh, as we talked about earlier, the, the food program, and you have a grant dealing with PTEC, to say that the grant is being renewed for the food program has nothing to do, th, these are two distinct items. The grant for forty-nine thousand dollars is distinct from the two hundred thousand dollar line item that I was told would be renewed from the Commerce Corporation.
Um, and, and I, I hear Mr. Carlin, and I, I understand, um, the, the questions. I do believe this has all been gone over at the financial review committees at great length, there's been many, many meetings. I believe Mr. Carlin is a member of that committee, and I certainly want to report out to everybody the answers to these questions, but these questions, eh, in the form, be more specific, and then we can, you know, at the next meeting, get more specific. I don't know that Dr. Colley's trying to withhold or hide any of these answers.
No, he's not. Nobody suggested, I don't know how I can get any more specific. I was very, very specific.
No, and I understand it, it just seems like the answer is not coming to the surface here, no matter how hard or how specific you try to be.
Why isn't it coming to the surface?
I can't answer that question, but I don't know how, how long we can keep, or how many times you can ask a variation of the question, and I appreciate the questions.
My last question is, what happened to the six hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus, or leftover funds, or whatever you wanna classify it as, from fiscal seventeen? I don't see a reporting of that anywhere, and, and we haven't, to be fair, we haven't received a report of that. It's not as though it was there last month, and it's not there this month, but where do you propose to, to, do you propose to give us an update on a monthly basis? I had asked this question last month, and I was told we would include the status of the surplus from fiscal seventeen. I, I didn't see it. Am I missing something?
The, the surplus cannot be utilized unless by action of the school committee, so it hasn't been touched. It's still sitting there, so nothing's been done.
That's right, so, so, but can we at least see, see something that shows us, is this, it's still six hundred and thirty thousand dollars left over from, from fiscal seventeen?
According to the audited statements, it's six hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars in the unrestricted school fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Colley.
Thank you. There's also a restricted part of the fund that is six hundred, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six.
And what is that for?
It's restricted mostly to, um, NACTAC, PTEC, vocational.
Would, would the auditor not have noted that in the auditor's report that came out in mid-November?
They did.
So why does he say, why does the auditor say then that, that the surplus is?
That is the surplus, that's what they call it. It's a surplus fund.
So this is...
So they, they have to classify it either as unrestricted, which means the school committee can choose to spend it any which way they want. It doesn't have to be restricted to a certain program or purpose. So they split it, and they let you know, here's the part that the school committee can use for anything, salaries, expenses, whatnot, and then here's the part that is restricted, where you have to go back to the original fund... restricted, where you have to go back to the original funding source and what it was for, and you have to spend it in that fashion if you want to spend it, or you can just let it sit there.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Dr. Colley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Jermaine, the remainder of the agenda is reports from yourself, being enrollment reports, homeless reports, CTE, which is chronic early absentee truancy reduction, strategic plan update, and superintendent's update, if you would just kind of give us an overview of your reports.
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing extraordinary. As I mentioned earlier, Owen Martin was here with his family, and he did receive an award, but he's been named a semifinalist in both the general and career and technical education components of the U.S. Presidential Scholars. So, that's excellent. I believe Owen will be attending Harvard next year. On the grants, you've already mentioned, and we're so excited, $300,000 to continue our work at Rogers High School, and we are greatly appreciative of the Bar Foundation. Security, schools are having their trainings during May and June for the staff, and security cameras are being installed at Rogers High School. They're already in, they're on a trial basis, and we're watching those. And then Thompson Middle School, we're looking, is being studied as well. And you have other reports, and Ms. Grantham provided from a PD she attended. IT Director Patrick Kuyanty has, I just want you to note, to see all the school dudes, the requests for fixes, and what they complete. I think that's important, you see that, that'll help us as far as staffing. And then Durham Boss Services continues to provide the monthly reports, whether they're on time or not. And we had, as you know, a great visit. Thank you to all that attended, and for all your support, for Mr. Young, Ms. Clark. Thank you, it's getting late. And the entire teaching staff and everyone at NEASK, we are hoping to have a very positive accreditation vote in October. So, thank you.
I'll just accept them as reported out. Do you have questions, Ms. Gaines?
I would just ask that, maybe at the next meeting, we could spend a little time on the update for the strategic plan.
Sure. That's the color-coded plan you have. That's been moving along great, but I'll have more details for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next portion of the agenda would be updating upcoming dates. We have May 7th, which is parent advisory council, that's at 5:30 here at Pell Elementary, that's going to be at the school library.
It's tonight, it can't be.
May 7th?
That was yesterday. It happened, too. It did happen.
It did happen, but it's in front of me, and I apologize. I'm just reading off the sheet. And those of you who missed it, it was fantastic. I did.
I passed by.
May 14th, 2000, are you checking me, Kathy, over there, to make sure I'm paying attention? Did you throw that one in at me? May 14th, which hasn't come yet, and I hope to see it, Newport School Committee, Newport City Council Liaison Subcommittee is at 1 o'clock, that's at the public library. The 18th of May Wellness Subcommittee, 9th?
1 o'clock?
Hmm?
1 o'clock?
Yeah, it says 1 o'clock.
What do you mean, am I crazy? It says 1 o'clock.
It says 1 o'clock.
Are you feeding bad information?
I thought you said budget.
No.
Oh, I thought you meant the joint.
I said, your meeting with the school committee, they happen every day at 1 o'clock when you folks meet.
Every second Monday.
I think they're getting punchy.
Getting tired.
Yeah. I thought you said budget. That's why I'm.
I know, you were talking about May 30th.
Okay.
You did say budget.
Liaison Subcommittee.
Okay.
I read it. I don't know if I, why I would have inserted the word budget, but I'll be able to check it later, Frankie. I'll have to look at your tape. May 18th, Wellness Subcommittee Meeting is scheduled, as far as is in front of me, at 9:30 in the morning at the Career Tech Center in Room 924. If there's any corrections on any of these, we will send them out. And finally, what's in front of me, written, is May 30th, there's a Newport School Committee, Newport City Council Joint Meeting. This one happens to be at 6 o'clock in the evening, and that one would more than likely have something to do with our budget. And that's the one, and that's going to be at council chambers, and I do believe, Mrs. Gaines, that was probably the one you were staring at when I read the 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So, with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, seconded, elders in favor. I, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.